Is. And I'd like to call village board meeting, uh, Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, the border, and we will begin roll call. Uh, trustee Booker.
Yeah.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Owens.
Yeah.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Greaves.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
President Montgomery here. Um, and we'd like to invite Autumn to join us as we designate President Peters. President Peters to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sort of, our person decided to be heard, I'd just like to take a moment to, um, acknowledge, uh, the incident that occurred in Madison was contemplated and, um, although it's not here in Brown Deer, um, it is in our state, in our world, and, um, at this time of year, I just want to pause and, um, acknowledge that tragedy and to say to my own self that certainly lifting that community up the prayer and those families who may have lost child or someone that's injured. So, um, with that, um, any person deciding to be heard?
Yes. Number one's thirty-four, thirty-five, West Pelican Lane.
Good evening. Good evening.
Um, I was here for the, uh, I'm pertaining to when we get down to the new business and one of them is for Nate. And, um, the cost of the daylight creek to open the creek up to the village, how about how much is that gonna be?
So we have a preliminary estimate from Sura back of two and a half million dollars. We anticipate overdoing that cost in part through the tax incremental financing district, but also through some grant opportunities. We believe that there's some significant grant opportunities through, uh, the Department of Administration, Department of Natural Resources to do that.
And will that be done before after the constructions start?
During.
During?
Yeah, so we anticipate working with with Sonya to kind of time that up and hopefully, uh, deliver it at that or around the same time that the big box retailer would be looking to open, which is, I would say roughly eighteen months from, uh, this spring.
Okay. Um, and then my other question is for the, um, the gas station convenience store, will that be open twenty-four hours a day?
I, I don't think so, but, um, because we don't try to get anything open twenty-four hours.
It would not. The proposed hours of operation are from five AM to one PM, although,
One AM.
Or one, one AM, excuse me, uh, although, uh, we anticipate that the store location would be closing at midnight. However, we're authorizing for an additional hour for wind down of of their services.
Okay, all right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item in our packet, oh, any, no one else, right?
Correct, no one else.
Um, the next item in our packet is elected official for staff reports. Um, any questions or comments relative to items there? If not, we will move on to item number five. Um, and under our consent agenda, we got the minutes of the December second, twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, board meeting, we have approval of the twenty twenty-five holiday schedule. Uh, consideration of the twenty twenty-five village board meeting schedule. Consider approval of the contact with Sweetwater for the twenty twenty-five best management practices inspections. Uh, consider service agreement with Andersbell for the Brown Deer magazine and accept the twenty twenty-four November voucher statement. Uh, there's a, a few items there. I'm, if there's any questions, uh, trustee Wood.
My question concerns the contract with Sweetwater. What exactly is best management practices?
So, uh, this really gets to all of our stormwater management facilities, uh, our stormwater ponds, our bioswales, uh, our catch bases with extensive sun pumps, underground storage. The intent here is to have Sweetwater, uh, investigate, monitor, and report back to, uh, Matthew's department on the condition of those and whether or not they, the private entities, as well as the village and home, uh, facilities, are meeting the intended, uh, stormwater management quantity and quality standards. And if they're not, we can then follow up and, uh, make sure that they are repaired or corrected to, uh, follow best management practices.
Is that, uh, trustee Owens?
Yeah, I also had a question on your, on the same issue. Um, for the private, okay, that is there a cost put in or not, or is?
So this is a conflict being borne by our stormwater, uh, stormwater utility. Generally, when we enter into an agreement with anyone, we do have a five hundred dollar fee, and so that fee is put into the stormwater utility to help offset that. Now, their responsibilities for ongoing maintenance, that is a hundred percent on them. Uh, unless there is some special agreement, of which I only know of one for the Bevy Apartments, uh, where the village assists in some of that maintenance, because it is, uh, not just their pond, but it's for the larger neighborhood.
Other questions? Um, I do have one question as it relates to the, um, increase for the, the magazine, and I see that, well, I know the foundation is looking at, and so what would be the village's overall?
So the village's contribution will go up from forty-five hundred to fifty-five hun- well, forty-six ninety-five specifically. It'll go up to fifty-five hundred, and the school district will also go up to that. And just to let the board know, the foundation did approve, uh, about two weeks ago now to be a, a third partner in the arrangement. They'll give one thousand dollars per issue, so for twenty twenty-five, that would be three thousand dollars.
So will that bring down our portion or no?
No, our portion will go up to five thousand five hundred. Main reason for that is now that Nathan went through one year of advertising revenue, he's seeing that the revenue was, um, under what was originally projected. And just so you know, every, when we were with the previous magazine publisher, we very rarely would receive any records of the advertising dollars that we had, so that was just a full projection that Nathan had to go off of. So these are at, off of actual dollars now.
And we, have we budgeted for quarter?
Yes, yeah, we're fine.
Uh, other questions about consent agenda? Trustee, uh, Owens.
I just have one correction for the minutes.
I agree. If there are no other questions, can we entertain a motion to approve consent agendas?
Make a motion. And will we, uh, approve the consent agenda with the correction that was initiated?
Is there a second?
Second. Third.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Greaves to approve the consent agenda. Are those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Eyes have a motion carries. Thank you. Um, item number six, new business. A review and possible action on the development agreement with with Sonya, Brown Deer LLC for commercial and mixed use, residential development on the southern half of the marketplace shopping center located at ninety twenty, I've been ninety ninety-six North Green Bay Road. And, uh, we just came out of the plan commission meeting, um, an hour ago, maybe not, um, where this was presented. And the plan commission did, uh, recommend this unanimously with one, no, this one's okay.
Yep.
Um, so we do have representatives from Wessonia, and we also have Nate who can cheer or, um, attorney.
So I'll, I'll maybe lead off here. Uh, we have Drew Mitch from, uh, Sonya Real Estate, as well as Chris Mills from Grave, uh, being here on the plan. Uh, obviously, uh, the board is somewhat familiar with this concept. You see the concept plan in your packet. What we are now moving in towards is kind of the first phase of this project, and that first phase involves a land division of some outlots along Green Bay Road, of which one would be the remaining kitchen and cocktail building, there would be four additional outlots going along with that. And a lot for an approximate hundred twenty-eight thousand square foot big box retailer and associated parking, uh, drive aisles and so forth for that development. And then in line with that would be a mixed use building, twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial space on the first floor, approximately a hundred apartments on the floors above that space. The proposal before you this evening is really for, and what, what was at the plan commission was a review of the development agreement. Uh, the site plan information is lagging a bit, and there was some robust discussion with the plan commissioners about some enhancements to the site plan, uh, namely adding landscaping and some pedestrian connectivity through the site. There was also some questions about traffic impacts and needing to see, uh, traffic impact analysis as those plans are further developed. It's anticipated that Wessonia will be bringing that back in, uh, January, uh, to have further review for the site plan. Was, was also discussed in the plan commission was that, and noted was that all of the individual outlots and future development or other phases would be coming back for site plan approval on their own accord, uh, when those developments, uh, are, are happening. Uh, so with Sonya's out to market on the outlots, and so as interest arises, they will then circle back with us. They would be the land owner of the outlots and the mixed use building, uh, and executing a lease with the, uh, big box retailer. The development agreement that was unanimously really over, uh, oversees and guides the land use itself. So it contains provisions on the operational side of things, talking about, uh, the maintenance of the site, uh, keeping it free of trash and debris. It also talks about what type of uses can be located there. Generally, we're allowing anything in our B-three zoning district to be located at this site if it's a permitted use in the B-three district and conditionally permitted if it's a conditional use. The last piece of the development agreement and obviously one of, of significant importance to all parties is the financial incentive package that is proposed. And as we've talked about in some closed sessions, what this does is memorializes the pay go that the village will be providing to Wessonia as part of this development. Generally speaking, it'll be averaging an assessed value, or excuse me, a guaranteed value of forty million dollars throughout the life of this TID. Uh, that will last to twenty fifty-two in exchange for up to twelve point eight billion dollars of incentive from the village. That incentive would be the turn to Wessonia at a rate, uh, annual rate, uh, on their increment of ninety percent back to Wessonia with the village retaining ten percent. With the idea that the village can use that ten percent to fund other efforts, perhaps daylighting of the creek, administrative expenses and so on, until the time at which Wessonia recuperates that, that twelve point eight million dollars. In the packet and also presented to the plan commission was a but-for analysis from Ellers. Uh, and they found that this project does in fact meet those statutory requirements, that the developer does need assistance in this case to make it financially viable. And they also indicated that, uh, the amount of requests is something that's sustainable for the village and its TID district. And so that report is also in your packet along with the development agreement. The plan commission, uh, was made aware that we are not approving, seeking any approval of the site plan at this time. So what we'd be asking for approval of tonight is the development agreement. The site plan would return at a later date, uh, for your final approval, at least on this first phase, and then for all subsequent phases as well. So with that, obviously, Attorney Markwitz can answer any development, uh, agreement related questions, and Drew Mitch and the team, uh, can answer any site plan question you have.
Trustee Owens.
I have got a, uh, call from one of our residents, and this was in regards to page forty-six, under which was also on, uh, the Facebook page. And I realize it says, it says it's not for construction, but they listed business partners on there, and one of the business partners that they included was Starbuck. So their, their question was, was does that impact the one that's going up on sixteenth?
And that's. We don't know. Um, that is just a general floor plan.
Right.
Uh, from the retailer that was included to provide some perspective as to how the store would lay out and why the site plan is oriented the way it does. It does not commit them to, uh, any particular build out. And generally speaking, uh, we approve the land uses, um, and not their layout. And so this agreement, for example, would allow restaurants, so, uh, or coffee shops. So if this retailer wanted to host a restaurant or coffee shop within their business, uh, they would have the right to do that, not needing additional approval from the village. They would simply need to get occupancy. Now, what Starbucks corporate decides is in their interest or not, I couldn't tell you. Uh, from everything we know, uh, from talking to Allring about the site at sixteenth and Brown Deer, they still have a commitment on a lease there.
I'll answer that.
Yep.
Other questions?
I don't question, Nate.
Sure.
So, when, when you, when you start to talk about building out these, these commercial lots, but you don't have a tenant, uh, what if you come across a restaurant that needs a hood? You've already built the building out for where it doesn't. I'll tell you, having, you know, building a cook, how are you gonna deal with that?
So Drew and Mitch can probably speak to this as well, but my understanding is that their intent is not to build on spec. So they would only be delivering a building once they have a, a customer, if you will, a, a tenant to occupy it or a buyer to buy that site. And then either with Sonya would develop the site, uh, specifically for them, or they would sell them the land, uh, for that particular user to build whatever they wanted. And of course, we would maintain that approval rights for the site plan and their designs.
Other questions? I don't know, Drew or Alan. You want to speak to your plan?
Uh, Drew Steyer, president of Wessonia. Um, Nate did an excellent job. Thank you for anything, just, uh, Nate, Tyler, uh, Alan, everybody's been a pleasure to work with. Um, we're excited about the opportunity. Um, I think we were before you, uh, maybe three or four months ago, and, uh, we've been working on this project for, I would say, about a part of six to nine months, so. Excuse me, we all have a lot of time and energy invested into this. We're really excited about the opportunity. Uh, myself and my partner Mitch are available for any questions. Uh, but otherwise, I think Nate did an excellent job of doing what really what we want to do with the plan, um, the incentive, uh, and what we requested, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Owens.
Um, my question, I can't really find you right now, but basically the question was, I think in, in one part of the proposal, they said that it was gonna start by, can, twenty twenty-six? But then in another, I think in the elders, it said it's gonna start twenty twenty-five, I think of twenty twenty-five, and I'm just wondering which one?
Uh, we, we would plan to start in twenty twenty-five, so Q two or Q three of twenty twenty-five in a perfect world. Um, we do have a couple existing tenants that we need to, um, take care of, or they're gonna be to relocate or terminate their leases. So we, that's probably the biggest unknown from the timing perspective that we need to work with right now. Um, I would say the anchor retailer is extremely engaged, which is very, very positive, so we're really encouraged by that, so. Um, that's a long answer for you, but there was twenty twenty-five.
So, yeah, generally, that, that still is correct with, uh, with the development agreement and the elder report contemplates, because that's when they would start demolition. But then the value guarantee starts in twenty twenty-six, because the, the tax year always follows the year of the activity.
All right, thanks for that explanation.
Other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? Uh, if there are no other questions, can we entertain a motion to approve this development agreement?
I'll make the motion. I move we approve the development agreement with Wessonia Brown Deer LLC for the, for the residential, residential development on southern half of the marketplace shopping center.
I'll second that. It's been moved by trustee Woods and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve the, uh, development agreement with Wessonia Brown Deer LLC. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have a motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys for coming.
Yeah.
Yes.
Take care of this.
Next item on our agenda is the, uh, review and possible action on the development agreement and site plan as the Sage Wind Manager LLC for fueling station, convenience market, and restaurant would drive through at forty-seven fifty West Brown Deer Road. Uh, Nate?
Sure, uh, we had another very good conversation in the plan commission, and in your packet, uh, you have a development agreement and site plan with, uh, Sage Wind for a fueling, uh, station, a restaurant with associated drive-through and convenience market. Uh, Sage Wind is, is new, uh, to market. Uh, they are, uh, a development on Potawatomi that is looking to bring kind of a new, uh, concept, uh, on the convenience gas, uh, restaurants uh, to Brown Deer, and what they're proposing is about ten thousand square foot store on the two acres of undeveloped land just south of the existing Wright Height building or the former Wright Height building. And they would be dividing that parcel, uh, out, uh, of the Wright Height site by CSM that is also in your packet and on the agenda for review here this evening. It was recommended by the plan commission. The, uh, uh, the plan commission, uh, we've talked about multiple things, uh, including the development agreement that uh, oversees the plan unit development that we have here in the filming. It talks about hours of operation, uh, exterior storage, um, and then it also, uh, was a recommendation to include some language on, uh, the fact that they knew, do need to get a liquor license approval uh, from the village board at a later date. The other item that, uh, the approval from the plan commission was conditioned upon was the fact that as part of this development, the DOT is requiring a traffic signal at the intersection of Harvont Drive and Brown Deer Road because of the access that Sage Wind is including on their development plan, coming as a right in, right out off of Brown Deer Road. And so as part of that, Sage Wind has agreed to contribute fifty percent of the cost for that signal with the village and the other adjoining property owners splitting the remainder of that cost based upon previous plan agreements. So that's something that as the plans for that signal be developed, we will be bringing back to the board to discuss about the cost share contribution, but this is something that Sage Wind is agreeing to participate in to the tune of fifty percent. The, uh, the discussion at the plan commission, uh, then kind of focused on, uh, some signage and setback issues around the west side of the site and the drive-through, encouraging the developer to explore some separation, uh, from the right way and sidewalk with perhaps some structural materials or enhanced landscaping. And then, uh, it talked, we talked about, um, some of the things, uh, such as trucking, which would not be allowed, uh, or it would not be used as a truck stop. This is not your kind of highway oriented, uh, convenience store or gas station. And, uh, we talked a little bit about some of the concepts for the store, how this is an elevated concept, and we do have Rob Gammel from Sage Wind here who could walk you through that if you would like to learn more about, uh, you know, some of their intentions about onsite, uh, or at the pump ordering and some of the drive-through menu items, uh, we talked about. The last thing I would, uh, leave with the plan, or excuse me, the, the village board, we did not talk about at the plan commission, but Attorney Markwitz pointed it out to us at the close of that meeting, which was to add a provision into the development agreement that would require a property to remain taxable perpetuity. Uh, because this is in TIP district number five, uh, it's very important that we have that provision included. It is not Sage Wind's intention to go, uh, taxing sense. Uh, it is also not because of the, the Potawatomi situation, uh, nor is it their intent to bring gambling to the site. Uh, so we still want to memorialize that in the development agreement, so we would ask that any approval have three conditions.
Traffic.
Traffic, liquor license, no taxes in. And so with that, uh, I know that their architect, I believe, is also on the call, uh, Robert Sullivan, and Rob Gammel is here and could answer any questions, uh, about the site plan or the use.
Okay. With that, any questions? Trustee Johnson.
Hello, Chris, we had talked about charging stations. Is that something?
Those are still included. If you were to look at the packet, uh, you would see, uh, some elevations, uh, kind of a, uh, uh, an angled canopy, uh, that is rendered, and those would be located at the southeast parking stalls onsite. If you look at the site plan, there's kind of a crosshatched area, uh, over those parking spaces on the southeast corner of the lot. And that would be where the electrical, electric vehicle charging would be. I believe there would be two, Rob? Oh, we'll have provision to the four vehicles.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Maybe it would be universal, if you wanted to.
Correct, yeah, we have, uh, a whole team.
Yeah, this is my, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob Gammel, speaking of development, uh, which I just trust you say here this evening for having us again. Um, yeah, so we have, uh, uh, the capability to service four vehicles for tier three fast charging, uh, at this location. Uh, in terms of being universal, we have a whole team, uh, business unit, and our under Potawatomi Ventures that focuses on this, uh, electric vehicle, uh, charging infrastructure, and so they do everything to make sure that this, uh, this service will be open at home.
I have a question related to the, I'll have electric vehicles, but how much would it cost me to get a full, full charge?
Uh, I'll have to, I, I couldn't answer that because it's all dependent on the possible electricity and there, uh, the regulations that might be placed there, but effectively, uh, there's a, uh, sort of a mark on the power that we're buying from the grid, uh, that's our basic word.
Other questions?
I have a second question, but, uh, he answered.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
You have one?
No.
Oh.
Well, technically, yes, no one out there. Is that wrong?
My daughter just bought a total electric vehicle, no high trade, all electric.
So, could you find out how it's gonna be charged? Cause, um, I have an active view. Um, some places they charge by kilowatt hour, but then sometimes other places depend on where you go, they charge by the time that you actually use charging a vehicle.
I believe our business model will be based like kilowatt hour. We can follow up with you if we know that, because, uh, we get closer. Obviously, I've worked with, uh, KZLP, uh, to get that to harbor. with KZLP to get that in our place as well.
And and someone required, depending on what type of vehicle you have, you require an adapter that you have to use for that. So.
Yeah, I think I think it's called a NACSE adapter. And those most cars are coming with those now. Those that don't have it, the plug should be universal and have an adapter. So we'll be working through that. We can we can get you the final conditions moving forward.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
If not, we do need a motion to approve the development agreement and site plan.
Just to keep in mind that the motion would include
Three.
Yeah. Provisions of a traffic signal, no tax exempt, and need for liquor license.
Yeah, separately.
I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the development agreement and site plan with Sage Wind Management LLC for a fueling station, convenience market, and restaurant with drive-through at forty seven fifty West Brown Deer Road with the requirement, the traffic signal, liquor licenses. And stays on our tax rolls forever.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Woods and seconded by trustee Greaves to approve the development agreement and site plan with Sage Wind Management with the three additional requirements. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is review and possible action on the certified survey net at eight nine hundred North Harbon Drive, forty seven fifty West Brown Deer Road. Nate?
Very simply, the CSM is to create the parcel for the fireside market development. And seeing that that was approved, we would need approval of this CSM. We find that all of the dimensions are accurate and conform to our code. There will be a cross-access movement indicated on the CSM for the north side driveway, which does cut across the Wright Height property or the remaining Wright Height property. And we find that to be acceptable and would recommend approval of the CSM.
Any questions? No questions? I move approval. Of CSM at eight nine hundred North Harbon Drive, forty seven fifty West Brown Deer Road. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by President Montgomery, seconded by trustee Thompson to approve the CSM at eight nine hundred North Harbon Drive and forty seven fifty West Brown Deer Road. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I never get to make a motion. And so.
No. I was gonna say, I don't remember you making a motion.
Next item is consider approval of the contract with Ten Mile Park Project to vetting construction.
So Vincent is the low bidder. This was our third time going out for Ten Mile Park. Third time was a charm. Matthew reviewed the low bid. Vincent was both low on the base bid and when including the alternate bid for the parking lot at two million four hundred and seventy seven thousand and sixty five dollars and seventy six cents. I will rehash what Ten Mile Park is. I think we all know kind of what that would be. We did receive four bids. We are very comfortable with Vincent as one of the larger and more preeminent contractors in the area. For example, they were the lead contractor on the diverging diamond at the intersection of I forty three and Brown Deer Road. So they they do big work and we've not had them in the village for a while, but we are very familiar and are fully confident that they can execute this. It would leave us ample money in the remaining Ten Mile Park grant budget to allow for construction management and staking, as well as approximately an additional hundred thousand dollars for contingency and some other minor site improvements that we might want to add into the project. So we're very comfortable in recommending it to the board for approval tonight.
Did any of these four submit bids the first time?
We did have Poblocky submit previously. Zignego and Preparo were new to the bidding process. It did generate a lot of interest. We had well twelve prime holder bid, but still very good interest. A lot of the folks, I shouldn't say a lot, but several of the folks that were prime plan holders ended up being, are going to be subs for a bid on this project. So someone like Stark Asphalt, for example, for some of the paving. So all in all, we we think we timed it right in terms of getting interest and the modifications to the plan, taking up a building, I think, and the skate park really allowed people to be more confident in their numbers and come in under budget.
Do we know if any of their subcontractors are minority vendors, either women or people of color?
I do not.
Is it possible for us to get a list once they did?
We can.
Question. I'm just curious. Sid Poblocky gave the first one. I know that the bid was a little bit different than now.
Yes.
I'm just curious, did they get higher or lower this time?
They were definitely lower. Yes, definitely. They were at about three and a half million the last time around, if I recall. They're definitely over three million. They were the higher of the bidders. So this this represents a significant reduction, at least for the base bid from what what we had previously. So it wasn't just that other contractors came in and really undercut anyone here. Everyone everyone's price drops.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
I have a question related to contract. When it comes to minority or women in home businesses, is that something that we track within the village based on general contractors or subcontractors?
Not that I know of.
We do not, no.
Is that something you can move forward?
If you would like to ask us to, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that. And I think one of the things that we can do, whether it's in the bid documents or the RFP, is we can make sure that we include some language that allows that to be part of the, you know, or to to make sure that's identified in the proposal.
Do we, we'll get our contract. I know we do look at the money aspect. Do we rank them at all according to their history, references, the dollar?
Not not part of this process because this is a like a an official bid process where you have to take the low bidder. But when we do like an RFP process, which we'll talk about later in the night, you don't necessarily have to take the low bidder in that. In this example, we do.
The other question is, as for instance, and I don't know if we'll have any furnishings or anything at Ten Mile Park. Or even at the pond. Do, is that on the village or does the company that does the construction pull in those pieces too?
So in Ten Mile Park, we have certain site improvement elements that are that were part of the bid. So they're they kind of go hand in hand with the landscaping plan. We give them the specifications and then they give us a bid item. And it's up to them how they want to source, you know, that item. We'll say, this is the type of trash canister you need to use. Go out and find the best price wherever you want. You give us a price and then that will be a part of the bid. And so we have sun shades in the plan. You know, we have, you know, the white racks, the garbage cans. Those are all part of the plan, some benches, some picnic tables. But we took that number down a little bit from our initial bid just to help ensure that we had a bigger cushion. And so I think what we'll look at doing, either through a grant that Tyler and the Parks and Rec staff worked on to apply for, using those dollars or using some of our remaining dollars to bolster that back up a little bit, enhance it, and and add some other furnishings, some public art pieces perhaps, and so forth. The other piece about the the bidding requirements, I will tell you that we could also perhaps maybe look and work with Matthew. It would be up to the board if you wanted to adopt some more more of a formal policy on specific minority hiring or something like that as a part of our process for bidding. That's something that other communities have done. City of Milwaukee, for example, Milwaukee County, that can be included in our bid process and then it would be formalized as part of our bidding process. But right now it is not. So at most we could do is just look and see if there are, if there is that represented in in the contractors. But there's no requirements that we would have to, or a prime bidder would have to have for certain numbers of subs.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question. Consider that moving forward.
Yeah, we'll have that as a future agenda item.
Other question?
You mentioned timing. You think timing was a major factor in reducing pricing?
Timing and the reduction of some of their, the removal of some of the more complicated bid items, the skate park and some of the complexities of building that. But timing was very key, I think, here. We're at the end of a construction season. These contractors are all very hungry now for getting jobs to line up for the new year. We are kind of ahead of schedule for other people to get their bids out by bidding it in November, December like we did. And this basically is right there on the doorstep for them to move into a job starting off the new year. And so they're winding down all their work. They can focus on giving us some numbers and they can hopefully give better numbers to try to win that job so they have something lined up coming right out of winter. So I think that really helped us.
And we have, we're still on schedule with that timing.
Yep, we can use that through twenty twenty six. So we actually have, we have a lot of twenty twenty six to use it, but our intention is to start next spring and be done by the fall. So that would still give us a whole year of buffer. And then if we have any extra money, that would still give us some extra time with which to spend down the intervening dollar amount.
I was just gonna say, coming from purchasing, timing is always key. I'm buying certain commodity. You know, just give you an example, like if you need roll of salt, you wouldn't wait until the winter to buy it because chances are you may not be able to get it. And if you do get it, pay a lot more for it then. Same way with construction projects and that. If you bid this stuff off-season, you get a better price. And plus, like I said, you might get a little few extras too for the same cost. But that's what I always thought.
So with other questions? If not, we have a contract that we need to approve with Vincent. Is there a motion? Trustee Owens?
I move that we approve the contract award for Ten Mile Park Project.
Is there a second? Been moved by trustee Owens and seconded by trustee Greaves to approve contract award for Ten Mile Park Project to vetting construction company. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any objections? Eyes have emotion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is consideration of resolution twenty four hyphen twenty eight, the resolution designating officials authorized to declare official intent under reimbursement and reimbursement bond regulation. Tyler?
Yep. So this one, we talked about with the Village Pond concession restroom facility with that coming over the estimated budget. We had mentioned during that presentation that we would borrow from the sewer. And then when we do the borrowing in twenty twenty six, when we get those funds, that we would give that back or repay, reimburse the sewer fund. So basically, this is just a resolution that we worked with Corals to memorialize that.
Any questions? And the pond is up for this, the queue.
Yeah. So I mean, if you go back there, you'll see they've already started, you know, demolition and reconstruction. It's anticipated to be done by the end of June. And just keep in mind, even though the pond will start then, a lot of the work that lasts, you know, a few months, especially that last month, is all interior. So from the outside, you know, I don't think there would be any impact to those using the pond.
Questions? If not, we do need a motion to approve the resolution.
I move the motion. I move that we approve resolution number twenty four dash twenty eight, this was a resolution designating official authorization to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulation.
Is there a second? Been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker to approve resolution twenty four twenty eight, designating officials authorized to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulations. This is a resolution, so we will do a roll call. Vote. Trustee Booker? Trustee Woods? Trustee Owens? Trustee Johnson? Trustee Greaves? Trustee Thompson? President Montgomery? The resolution has been adopted. The next item on our agenda is to recess into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five one E for the property reasons, E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, investment of public fund, or conducting unspecified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is related to the queue by the dollar amount. Is there a motion?
I move that we go into closed session.
Is there a second? Been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Greaves to go into closed session. It is six forty eight. All over in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. We will go into closed session. Sorry to the audience. It is seven forty five, seven forty five PM, and we are returning into open session. And we have one item that we will be discussing, and that's possible consideration for an RFP. Are we developing assets at four thousand West Brown Deer Road? Nate, you are?
Sure, I'll give a a quick introduction. President Montgomery, we are anticipating the acquisition now of the First Citizens Bank property at four thousand West Brown Deer Road after having received word from First Citizens that they are willing to accept our offer in lieu of condemnation for one point nine two million dollars. We would be looking to quickly turn this property around and auction it for sale to the development. We would like to go out to that development community with later this week and receive responses by the first quarter of twenty twenty five in February. And so we are just looking for some additional direction from the board as to how you want us to frame the land use on that particular corner, what type of uses and site plan message we should send as we meet with developers and issue the RFP.
Okay, thank you. Any items, remember, come back trustees? Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I think as I've shared in the past, I think we have a great opportunity to do something with this corner. I think Yeah, I think as I've shared in the past, I think we have a great opportunity to do something with this corner. I think there's a number of things related to financing for ground here. I think there's opportunity for us to really strengthen the opportunity for restaurants in this area. I think we should also kind of limit the number of units on this site. But I think this is a very favorable site for us to look at when we develop.
Thank you. Other comments?
I look forward to uh receiving the proposals from the developers and see what their vision would look like for for that site. But we talked about a lot of different concepts and ideas, but we're not going to be the ones developing. That's why I say let's let's see what they bring. If we don't like what we see, it wouldn't get more definitive as we look at the process.
Yeah, I'd like to see some uh level of uh certainly entertainment, uh possibly theater opportunities, small concert with nice restaurant, places that we can go to here in the village without necessarily having to go downtown. Uh Milwaukee. Uh and I see that as a uh unique uh opportunity for the village, especially since I don't think there's much like that in the North Shore. So we could drive people here to the village as opposed to going downtown. And nothing against downtown, but. Other comments?
I was just gonna say, you took some of my words, but.
Wow.
And I would agree that we go ahead with this RFP and with some of the focus on entertainment, but a unique entertainment that'll draw not only ground here, but from, you know, surrounding community.
Other comments?
I would echo what trustee Owens just stated, but something that's interactive um within that community in that space, like everything has, everything ties together and you can move about it without a lot of um, without a heavy difficulty. So you can go for entertainment, you can go for um great beverages or dinner, um sit outside and relax a little bit, but just something that's more interactive with a heavy entertainment. Heavy.
Yeah.
Good.
That that gives us the feedback that we need. We'll make sure that's reflected, you know, some of those uses reflected in the RFP. And when we talk with uh developers who submit proposals, we'll make sure that's emphasized.
So we do need a motion now.
I just want to add, looking forward to the motion. I got a couple of titles for you on for a few of that. So include that in with the motion.
I I just want to applaud Nate did this in a day um when we got the news. And and that's where I really appreciate each and every one of you reviewing that, because when we're on a tight timeframe, the more eyes that can look at it, the better. So think, I just want to personally thank trustee Owens for doing that. Uh that's a huge help for us. So on the motion, I would just say a motion of uh moving to approve the RFP uh uh with the inclusion of the
Corrections.
Corrections and the feedback given, something like that.
Definitely.
No move?
Perfect.
Those seconds. You said, it's been moved uh to approve the RFP uh on redevelopment after set forty four thousand West Brown Deer Road. Been moved by President Montgomery, second by trustee Owens. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I just have a motion carries unanimously. Uh the next item on our agenda is a move with German at seven fifty one C. All in favor?